You're live, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm gonna call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to order, and I'll start with an apology for being late. We were taking care of some business in the other room. We will get right to the next agenda item, which is the invocation, and I will follow along in Counselor Farmer's absence and ask if Counselor Long would give us the invocation, please.
Yes. Father Lord Jesus, thank you for this day, Lord, and thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for the beautiful weather, and thank you for each family and person represented here today. Please be with us as we go about your business in Greenville County and help us to serve you well. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you would stand for the Pleasure of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Would you approve the minutes from May 20th?
If you all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Proclamations and Spec- Special Recognitions. First is Fatherhood Month, and I will call on Counselor Long.
Yes, do we have any, anybody from Elevate Fatherhood here? Awesome. Will you meet me down front, please? How are y'all doing?
All right.
Try to use this. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. What a great time to recognize fathers.
Yes.
Well, we're getting ready to celebrate Father's Day on the 15th.
Yes.
So I wanted to read this proclamation, and I'm excited to get to read it. Y'all do great work, and thank you for all that you do. This is gonna be declared Fatherhood Month in Greenville County, and whereas fathers represent the foundational element of resilient families providing love, guidance, and support to their children, and whereas the significant influence of fathers on their children's development is profound as they impart values, encourage growth, and nurture resilience, and whereas the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families established in 2002 has emerged as a pivotal source of support, equipping tens of thousands of fathers throughout our state with essential resources and knowledge to fulfill their responsibilities in fatherhood, and whereas the longstanding collaboration between the center and the South Carolina Department of Social Services alongside other state, local, and private entities has facilitated the center's expans- expansive into forty-six counties and enhancement of innovative programs designed to better serve a greater number of fathers, and whereas the center has successfully supported, developed, and broadened its father three sixty-five statewide network of regional fatherhood organizations that directly impact thousands of fathers and families every year, and whereas when fathers take an active role in leading and engaging with their children, these young individuals thrive in social, emotional, and academic domains, and whereas the center continues to exemplify a model for fatherhood initiatives on a national level, and whereas the month of June presents an opportunity for all citizens of our county to celebrate and honor the essence of fatherhood, acknowledging the unwavering efforts of fathers and shaping the future of our communities. Now, therefore, we, the County Council for Greenville County, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty five as Elevate Fatherhood Month. Throughout the county, encourage all of our citizens to express their gratitude for the fathers in their lives. This initiative aims to celebrate the significant contributions of fathers and to promote their active involvement in the lives of their children. Such involvement is essential for enhancing the well-being of young individuals, cultivating responsible citizens, and strengthening our families and communities across our country. Signed this day, the third of June, Benton Blount, Chairman, Greenville County Council.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you did.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, under Proclamations and Special Recognitions, we also have honoring Sparrow Financial's ninetieth anniversary. I'll call on Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like for Brian McKay, President and CEO of Sparrow Financial, to come forward, please.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Good.
Can you stand over this way and face the cameras, please?
Happy to.
Okay, great. This is a proclamation for Sparrow Financial on their ninetieth anniversary in Greenville County, where Sparrow Financial originally founded as Greenville Taco Federal Credit Union in nineteen thirty-five, has proudly served the Greenville community for ninety years, dedicating itself to the financial well-being of its members and fostering a culture of community trust and service, and where Sparrow Financial has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to its mission of improving the financial well-being of its members through providing exceptional financial solutions and personalized service to generations of local families, individuals, and businesses, and whereas for nine decades Sparrow Financial has fostered a strong foundation of trust and support by promoting financial literacy, stability, and empowerment for thousands of individuals while remaining dedicated to creating a positive and lasting impact within the Greenville County area and beyond, and whereas Sparrow Financial has actively contributed to the growth and prosperity of the Greenville community by offering resources, opportunities, and solutions that benefit both the economic and social vitality of the region, and whereas Sparrow Financial's service to the community has been marked by its steadfast values of integrity, respect, and a focus on making a meaningful difference in the lives of its members and the broader Greenville community, and whereas Sparrow Financial celebrates this remarkable ninety-year milestone, it is fitting to recognize its ongoing legacy of excellence, the hard work of its dedicated staff, and the countless individuals and businesses that have benefited from its services over the years. Now, therefore, Greenville County Council does hereby recognize and congratulate Sparrow Financial on the occasion of its ninetieth anniversary as we celebrate their continued commitment to the growth and success of our community and extend our heartfelt appreciation for their service and dedication over the past nine decades. Signed this third day of June, twenty twenty-five, Benton Blount, Chairman. Congratulations, sir.
Very much.
Keep doing your job in Greenville County.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have appearances on current agenda items. Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Audrey Pazin. Her topic is Item 8B, zoning text amendment, Paris Mountain.
Good, Ms. Pazin. We always miss you when you're not here.
Hello. It's so nice. It's a pleasure to thank you for something that I hope you're going to do tonight, which is to pass the ordinance on ESDPM. And I say that with a great pleasure because it, ESDPM deserves the amendment to the ordinance that you're going to do. You know, the memo introducing this ordinance to you that came from Todd Baxley said it was a result of an unintended loophole. I don't know what was intended or not intended back in the days that Joe Hiller and others were creating a lot of proposals for legislation that would impact Paris Mountain. So whether it was intended or not, it needs to, loopholes need to be closed. You know, the recent attempt to have a hotel built on Paris Mountain and have that land annexed by Travelers Rest showed everybody how much this county adores the mountain, not just the people who live on it, but everyone in the county loves the mountain. And so you're preserving it by protecting it. With this first small step is very important and useful. I'm going to tell you one other thing. More is coming in terms of finishing the job to protect Paris Mountain and making sure it will be developed in a sensible way that preserves the beautiful environment that it contains. A study was done in the nineteen nineties, and I hope as part of your process, you'll consult with that study because even though time has passed, time has not affected the slope of that mountain and the things that are hazardous on the mountain, like the potential for fire, for overdevelopment, for development in dangerous places, that, that continues. So what was learned in the nineties is still material today. So anyway, I'm gonna finish with time to spare and say thank you to all of you for passing this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Pazin. So move on to public hearings, and first we have the twenty twenty-six Greenville County Budget.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding the ordinance adopting the Greenville County FY two oh twenty-six budget.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bradley, we have eight speakers in favor and three in opposition. The first speaker is James Bowers.
Welcome, Mr. Bowers.
Hello. My name is James Bowers. I live in Greenville County. Go to college at Princeton in the Princeton Law Program. When I graduate, my goal is to live in, in a apartment in Greenville and have a job because I have Down Syndrome. I will probably never be able to drive a car. I need to be able to read, write a bus, to go to work, physical store, church, and social activities. I am able to learn to ride the bus, to, to, to do the activities of my everyday life. Want to work and live in my own like any other adult, but need support like buses. To do that, why none Greenville does not have enough buses for me live in a busy life. It would be hard for me to go to many places, and it would like to take a very long time. I want to be able to stay in Greenville to live and work when I get out of college, and without better public transport extension, I might not take to, to that. People with disabilities needs to be, to have access to good buses to be positive members of fair communities. Please keep money for buses in the present. Thank you.
Before we go to the next speaker, I have to tell Mr. Bowers that he's the only person since I've been chairman, I think, ever been on council that did it literally right to the second of three minutes. Stone?
Speaker is Camille Lewis-Loomis, I'm sorry.
Welcome, Ms. Loomis.
Good evening. My name is the Reverend Camille Loomis Renborg of Seventeen, Buckley Avenue, two nine six oh seven, and although I have concerns with much of the proposed budget, I am here tonight in my personal capacity as a resident of District Twenty-four to speak in support of keeping the fee in lieu of taxes distribution the same, specifically in support for providing stable funding for Greenville's public schools. I trust that the changes to the budget discussed while the public was in the speaker's sign-up line preserves the promised pilot funding for public schools. Adequately funding our public schools is so important. Council members, I do not know if any of you have attended or worked in an underfunded school district, but I have. Before I went to seminary to become a pastor, I taught in a Title I public school district in a different state. My students were remarkable, but the schooling conditions were abysmal. The school building was in such disrepair that it literally rained inside. There were spots where you could see blue sky through the roof. There was no money for things like classroom books, vegetables, and school lunches, or special education teachers who were equipped with training to differentiate instruction for dozens of students with different emotional and academic needs. And each day, the next generation of our citizens internalized the message that their lives, their education, and their potential was dispensable. I have seen firsthand the damage that an underfunded school system can do to the whole community. We must choose a better path. And as a community, we proclaim the worth and belovedness of each child when we vote to support public schools, and in doing so, we tell all of our children that each of them deserves our investment. So thank you tonight for your choice to maintain public school funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loomis.
The next speaker is Summer Mears.
Mr. Speaker, point of, the audience, I'm getting texts saying they can't hear it online. Is there something our IT guy can maybe turn up the volume of the speakers?
I'm sure. He probably heard you, so he'll get to work on it, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Mears.
Hello. Thank you, county council members, for your service to our community. I'm speaking in support of Greenlink. This is a critical moment for deciding the future of Greenville County. None of us wants Greenville to become Atlanta, and investing in a robust public transit system is absolutely critical for preventing that outcome. Giving people transportation options means the county can accommodate its immense projected population growth over the next few decades without having to expand roads and highways. We know based on abundant research and data and examples like Atlanta that adding car lanes is not a viable solution. Over time, adding lanes increases congestion and makes commute times worse, while giving people the option to take the bus alleviates traffic and creates a better experience for drivers. When you give people the freedom to choose which mode of transportation works best for them, everyone has a better experience getting where they need to go. Maintaining our roads is extremely expensive, as you well know. We have to fund transportation one way or another, so let's fund a fiscally responsible and cost-effective solution that will have an immense return on investment for the county. Investing in public transit isn't just good for the cities in the county. It means preserving our treasured natural spaces and farmlands instead of paving over them. It means allowing our urban populations to grow without destroying small towns. It means protecting communities and preserving the charm and character that makes Greenville County so special. I ride the bus when I can, but I would like to be able to rely on the bus more often, and I know many young professionals like myself who would take transit to work and other places if given the choice. I have experienced bus systems in other places in our country that are used by students, working professionals, seniors, and others on a daily basis, and Greenville could have that, too. In order to increase ridership, we have to increase Greenlink's quality of service by getting more buses going more places more often. Public transit is a necessity for Greenville County to thrive now and in the future, and in order to make that happen, we have to fund transit. So thank you for protecting funding for Greenlink in the county budget.
Thank you, Ms. Mears.
The next speaker is Dorothy Waldrop.
Welcome, Ms. Waldrop.
Hello, I'm Dorothy Waldrop. I'm speaking in favor of funding Greenlink. Funding Greenlink improves bus service in many ways. One, it improves bus stops. Approximately three hundred bus stops can be improved by making them more accessible, more comfortable, and/or safer. Two, service expansion, extending Saturday service to eleven thirty PM, adding a second bus to four routes, and aiming for a thirty-minute service frequency. Currently, Greenlink has a sixty-minute service frequency. That means if you miss a bus, you have an hour to wait for the next bus. That gives the domino effect. If you miss one bus, you have to wait an hour for the next bus. If you're late to work, you don't get paid for that hour you missed. If you don't get paid all of that, you might be a little bit low on paying for your housing, your rent or mortgage or whatever, and then your housing may be in danger. Paratransit. When my husband had Alzheimer's disease, before he was homebound, I couldn't drive, and of course, he couldn't drive. We applied for and were eligible for paratransit. His fare was, I think, three dollars, and I was his aide, so I didn't have to pay. We used paratransit to go for our small grocery trips. Parat- paratransit was a big help to us. His insurance covered transportation to and from medical appointments, and paratransit helped us with transportation for grocery trips. Another good thing about paratransit is that you can schedule a pickup time. So for example, if you're, you are in a wheelchair and can't use the regular bus stop that I mentioned before because it's not accessible, you can schedule a paratransit pickup. If I, I'm sorry, I just want to thank the council for protecting the funding for Greenlink.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Yvonne Reader.
Ms. Reader?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Yvonne Reader, and I'm a lifelong resident of Greenville, South Carolina. Greenville's population and urban sprawl is a great reason why we need a better bus system, and it needs to be funded because the population of the metro area has been steadily increasing, leading to more vehicles on the road. More vehicles on the road, more accidents. So it'd be safer if we have more people taking public transportation. We have a lot of people moving into the city of Greenville, and they are used to having good public transportation, especially those who lived in the north or in other areas of the country. So they come here looking for a better life, and we have everything that's great except public transportation. And if you're coming here for vacation, which Greenville has become a destination city for vacations, you're used to being able to go from your hotel to various sites in the city on the bus. We don't have that facility right now that's available. So we could be losing out on a lot of tourist money because we don't properly prepare for our tourists to come and visit our city. The other important thing is it's not, busing is not just for poor people because everybody has car maintenance, the price of a car, you have insurance on the car, and if we had a good public transit system, you would be able to leave your car parked unless you're going on vacation, and you would save a lot of money, plus you'd be safer because a lot of us don't drive as great as we should. So having someone else do the driving is a great deal for us. And to sum it up, I would like to say, improving Greenville's public transportation is not just about moving people. It's about fostering equitable access, protecting the environment, supporting economic development, and enhancing quality of life. A forward-thinking investment in transit, infrastructure would position Greenville as a modern, sustainable, and inclusive city, and that's who we ought to be.
Thank you, Ms. Reader.
The next speaker is Rebecca Howard.
Welcome, Ms. Howard.
I must say, I very much appreciate the timer. I am a preacher's daughter, and keeping my comments short is a difficulty. My name is Rebecca Howard. I was born and raised in Greenville, South Carolina, and I have lived in Greenville County for most of my fifty-three years. As you can see, I am a nurse, and I'm gonna talk to you about poor circulation. Poor circulation is a problem for many people. Some of you on our council probably deal with that. People who have poor circulation have a very, very decreased quality of life. They're not able to enjoy the things that the rest of us enjoy and are not able to have good health. Poor circulation affects the health of the entire body and can even cause death. In like manner, transportation is circulation for our county, and you all have agreed to serve as, as the arbiters of the county's health, and that circulation is incredibly important for the overall health of our county. We are a growing county. We are busting out of the seams, and we don't have a bus system that supports that county. And I keep hearing a lot that there's a lot, there's no one riding the bus system. Well, number one, there are a lot of no ones riding the bus system, and there's a lot of no ones that would ride our bus system if we put the investment into it. And I'm here to ask you, please invest in our bus system. When you invest in the bus system, you invest in the county's health overall. You increase independence for people who would not otherwise be able to be independent, such as Mr. Bowers. You help our retired folks be able to get to the grocery store, maybe even help some of them volunteer, teach a GED class. When you invest in the bus system, you allow the single mom with her children to be able to get to her job on a timely fashion and keep her job. You keep dreams alive, and when you invest in the bus system, you keep cars off the road that shouldn't be on the road in the first place. And I know this from my own experience as a younger person in a different state. The car that was left on the side of the road, the city paid to tow it. I couldn't afford to get it repaired. I signed the title over. I doubt very much the tow truck got any more money than scrap value. It was probably not more than a hundred dollars. So having that transit system that allowed me to go where I needed to go in a timely fashion made the difference between me having my entire world fall apart and me being a success, and now I am. And I'm a contributing member to Greenville County, and as a contributing member who pays our taxes, happily, please, put that money into the, into the transit system. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
The next speaker is Kyle Matthews.
Welcome, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you very much. I am Kyle Matthews. I live at five oh eight Palladio Drive in Greenville. I'm here today as a county resident of District Nineteen, who has lived in Greenville off and on for half of my life. At every age and stage, my family and I have been beneficiaries of Greenville County public schools. I'd like to ask that you continue to support them in the budget. I attended Green, Northwood Middle School and Eastside High School, which made it possible for me to attend Furman University, which led to the opportunity to have a full assistantship at a graduate school and pursue all of my professional and personal goals. My wife and children had similar paths. They were able to attend the colleges of their choice and have the careers that they love because Greenville County Schools and the Fine Arts Center gave them a strong foundation and a wider world and a broad socialization. and a wider world and a broad socialization and opportunities to learn and to grow. We know that many of our friends and neighbors would have found those kind of opportunities nowhere else but Greenville County School System. My wife and I returned to Greenville in 2008, hoping to give back to the community that gave us so much. I serve as a local pastor, and my wife has worked now as a teacher for 13 years, the music teacher at Sarah Collins Elementary, where I dare say she works harder than any CEO in the state and then gives extra hours and nights and weekends to make sure that she does more than the job requires. She does it because she sees lives transformed in her school every single day, where children are lifted up who might otherwise go completely unseen. So, I'd like to see our roads improve like everybody else, but roads versus schools is a false equivalency, a false choice. I ask you to continue to prioritize public education in service of the common good, affirming the inherent value and dignity of every child, and I support your decision to keep fee and lieu of taxes the same this year, providing the same funds for schools, cities, and fire departments, and I thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
The next speaker is Adam Hayes.
Welcome, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you for your time and service to the community. I'd like to start by saying I'm Adam Hayes. I'm with Larkins Restaurants. Larkins will be celebrating 20 years in Greenville this year, so a big monumental move for us. As a business owner of four restaurants and a catering company here in the upstate, we have about 300-plus employees. I'd say about 10% to 20% at any given time are dependent on the bus system. So, they're really dependent on the transportation to get to and from work. The low inventory of affordable housing really pushes our workforce out a little too far to walk to work, and affordability of cars is sometimes a little bit out of their budget. We oftentimes have to be extremely flexible with in times and out times based on the way this bus runs, especially on Sundays. The bus doesn't run on Sundays at all, so a lot of people can't work Sundays, or we have to come up with alternative transportation, and usually that means I'm buying them an Uber to get to work. So, everything you can do to fund public transportation would be a great impact to the restaurant business so that we can continue to keep serving you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hayes.
The next speaker is Diane Vreeland.
Welcome, Ms. Vreeland.
Diane Vreeland, on behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, 413 Heather Falls Lane in Simpsonville. First off, I want to thank the council for making considerable strides towards transparency and communication with the public. I want you all to know that these efforts are appreciated and look forward to the council continuing these practices. I do have some questions and concerns regarding the fiscal year 2026 budget. One, as of this date, we still do not have a detailed accounting of the dollars earmarked for roads in the past, i.e. how much money was moved out of the roads line items and where did those dollars wind up. If this study has been completed, would you please provide the public with an account for those dollars? Two, has the Finance Committee at a minimum, and I personally think the whole council should do it, gone through the budget line by line? There is so much to be discovered when you get into the budget minutia, including gaining a keen understanding of details you can only see and address when studying the budget in this manner. Three, whatever happened to zero-based budgeting? Is the council planning to create future budgets using the zero-based method? And if so, when might you be starting that process? Number four. Lastly, is there an appetite for implementing a DOGE-like process in the future to assess not only possible fraud, waste, and abuse, but as a tool to streamline our spending across all facets of our budget and aligning Greenville County's spending to be more in line with other South Carolina counties? The bottom line is that it is incumbent upon the council to continually protect the hard-earned tax dollars of all Greenville County residents. I would appreciate hearing back from the council regarding budget questions and concerns I have raised, and I'm handing a copy of my statement to the clerk so that it is part of the public record, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Vreeland.
The next speaker is Audrey Pazin.
Welcome back, Ms. Pazin.
There is so much to say about this budget. I don't know where to begin. If I read every bit of the six pages online, it would keep me up at night, but I realize something. It's not my job. It's your job. I don't envy you the task. It's a complicated task. Because I was away for a few weeks, I missed seeing your meetings in person, so I started by looking at the May 6 presentation that the county administrator gave to you to introduce the budget, and I will begin with that because I found it to be rather lacking. And I don't want to be too critical, but I have to be a little bit critical, and I have to remind you all of a great organizational idea, which is this: Begin with the end in mind. You know that strategy for planning. What is the end result for this county that the budget is to achieve? The first page of the presentation that the county administrator gave you talks about the organizational priorities for the county. Nobody questioned those priorities, but I agree with Mr. Tripp, something he said, which is rare, which he said earlier today: What's the policy here? Well, what is the policy for this budget? What goals do you really want to advance? Some of these items are so vague, it's a joke. It's like a fifth grader doing a report for school. Public safety. We're going to support public safety functions, blah, blah, blah. There's not a goal to reduce crime. Talks about infrastructure, and it goes on about... to say this: Provide for infrastructure that gives mobility and access to diverse communities. Sounds to me like trail building and bicycle paths. Infrastructure, so much more. I would invite this group to go back to square one. Look at those priorities and design a budget that fulfills the goals you want to set. You are the creators of policy, not the county administrator. His job is to carry out the policy you set. Another thing is getting your questions answered. I watched the video of that meeting on May 6, and at around the five-minute mark, Councilman Shaw asked some very good questions. Unfortunately, the answers, they weren't answers. It was words, but it didn't square with the question. In a courtroom, we'd say, move to strike, non-responsive. I don't ask you to be that aggressive, but I ask you to insist on getting answers and detail. Lastly, line by line, line by line. Extend the time for this work. Do a resolution to just roll with the old budget for a few weeks or months and get this next budget right. It's an awesome job. You can do it brilliantly. It takes time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pazin.
The last speaker is James Vaughn.
Welcome, Mr. Vaughn.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Jay Vaughn. I'm a lifelong resident of Greenville. I am a 40-year businessperson with multiple businesses in the southern part of the county, and this is my first time to ever address county council in that long period of time. And I was taught to speak positively. I want to speak positively. Unfortunately, when we compare different things within a limited budget, there are things that combat one another because those budgets are limited. Everybody has opinions on that. My personal opinions on some of the things that have been addressed this evening, I am different. I have a difference of opinion regarding our affordable housing initiatives and whether they be subsidies versus reducing permit costs and building costs so that we can build, even working with things like the expiration of the one-acre septic tank that restricted the use of small, cheap lots for cheap homes. So, as we come together tonight, you have to deal with a balance, and we are not all going to agree with that, but we can pick a few items and we can talk about them. I appreciate very much the idea of keeping the budget at the same level, not increasing the budget, but in one particular thing that was brought up tonight with our green shirts, I am opposed to expanding public transportation in Greenville when we have roads that are in such bad condition. Hundreds of thousands of people use these roads, including 100% of the public transportation riders. So, if we have a 60,000 rider per month average going out of the public transportation system, and we know that every trip is at least two ways, and we try to work backwards to the number of people that are affected by this, and we see that 65% of the people use the public transportation system at least four days a week, then we get down to a very small number as we divide and divide and divide. So, we end up with approximately 2,000 people, being generous. Out of that, you say that 20% of them would not have transportation without the public transportation. That's a very small number to compare 400 with the 100,000. So, please consider that in your balancing act. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have Glassy Mountain Fire Service Area General Obligation Bond Request, and...
Counselor Russo. Thank you. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $1.1,100,000 Greenville County, South Carolina, general obligation bonds, Glassy Mountain Fire Service Area Project Series 2025B, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
Counselor, Ms. Stone.
Chairman, Mr. Russo, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
All right. Having heard that, I'll consider this closed. We'll move to ordinances at third reading. We'll start with CZ 2025-022, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 12 Old Chick Springs Road, requesting rezoning from R20 to R10. I move for adaption of this ordinance at third reading.
In favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025-025, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 3835 East North Street, requesting rezoning from OD to C1. I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you all. In favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025-027, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 1421 O'Gunn Road, requesting rezoning from RS to AG. I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, under ordinances of third reading, Item B, zoning text amendment, Section 8.85, environmentally sensitive district, Paris Mountain, CZ 2025-028, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading, an ordinance to amend Section 8.5, the ESD-PM, environmental sensitive district for Paris Mountain of the Greenville County zoning ordinance.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Chairman, of the council members present, you have nine in favor, no one opposed.
Thank you. Item passes. Next, agenda item C, Brookfield Special Tax District Millage Request, Counselor Russo.
Thank you. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to approve the Brookfield Special Tax District Commissioner's request for an increase to its current ad verum property tax millage levy.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move to ordinances at second reading. I'll start with A, Glassy Mountain Fire Service Area General Obligation Bond Request, Counselor Russo.
Thank you. I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $1,100,000 Greenville County, South Carolina, general obligations bond, Glassy Mountain Fire Service Area Project Series 2025B, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We will move next to Item B, which is the FY 2026 Greenville County Budget, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance adopting the county of Greenville's FY 2026 budget, and I have an amendment for that.
State your amendment.
The proposed change to the budget ordinance for the '26 budget, reduced infrastructure... I told them one or two syllables, I can't say it. Reduce infrastructure bank FLO revenue by $12 million. Reduce infrastructure bank transfer out to road programs by $8,500,000. Reduce road program transfers from infrastructure bank by $8,500,000. Reduce road programs expenditures by $4 million.
Thank you, Counselor. And before we vote on this, I just want to go ahead and address for the people who spoke about the school budget, as well as if you were talking about the other districts that could have been affected by the FLO discussion that was in the news, all of that language that we discussed for a long time in committee just a minute ago, that language basically addresses that to where it will not impact those upcoming budgets. So, I just wanted to be clear on that, and then I'll open this up for conversation. Counselor, which is it?
This amendment will hold the school district and cities harmless this year, correct? So, next year, what's the plan?
Well, that ultimately, I'm just speaking for myself, but I'm guessing that will be up to council as we move forward into the next budget cycle.
But there's an ordinance being circulated that would reduce schools, cities, fire districts on new FLO projects coming forward. So, we're telling people that they're okay, but next year, they're not.
Well, and just to be clear, I'm saying it's stated from the conversation I have with the superintendent, as well as one of the school board members, and they basically just requested that if we were going to make any changes to the FLO structure, that we at least give them time since they had already adopted this upcoming budget so that they could figure out what they would need to do on their end. So, this was just to address that, and then we could address the other moving forward.
Okay. And what's the rationale for the ordinance that's being circulated? Who's going to push that ordinance? Who's carrying that ordinance? The one that reduces FLO dollars for other jurisdictions?
I would have to ask for clarification. I think it's coming from internal, from our staff, our department.
Okay. I just want to make clear that we're holding them harmless this year, but it's only for this year. Going forward, their budgets could be reduced.
Let's... Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Do you have anything else, Counselor? Trip? Counselor McGee?
Two statements here. One, to my colleagues, is that the budget amendment at hand that we're discussing takes the budget back to what it was last year as far as the FLO payments go. Okay? So, to be very clear, school funding's not changing. Okay? Nothing's... the funding for the fire department is not changing. What we're saying and what we're suggesting is, moving forward, prioritizing road safety for our buses, for the Greenlink, for everybody, for people, is that moving forward, the schools and as well as the county, is we have that FLO money that comes in, and right now, by ordinance, the county can take... gets 31% of that. The rest of it goes to fire districts, to schools, stuff like this. What we're suggesting in the future, moving forward, is that all the revenue, when we do this reassessment, everybody... when we do this reassessment, everybody's going to get more money next year. There's going to be more money coming in. More people are moving here, right? So, there's actually more money for the schools next year. What we're saying is that instead of that 30 million chunk that we give the schools every year, in future budgets, you're still going to get what you got this year, but next year, for FLOs moving forward, and FLOs are over 20 years, 30 years, 60 years. So, their funding they're receiving this year, they'll receive that same funding from FLOs moving forward. New FLOs that have been approved, that will... The county will retain more of those FLOs moving forward. So, the school is not getting a haircut, as it was referred to earlier. We're not taking more money from the schools next year. We're going to actually just not give them as much as we have in the past from those FLO pots. So, we all have to tighten our belts. We've all tightened our belts at home. We've all tightened our belts at businesses, if you own one. We've all tightened our belts all over the place. We need to prioritize the budget. As the one gentleman said, "Thank you for speaking up," is we can't fund everything. But at some point, we have to make a decision, where is the budget going to go? And what are we going to prioritize? Schools are a priority. I have three kids in public schools. They are a priority for me. My daughter's a teacher. But what I'm saying is, moving forward, that money, the school cannot rely on its huge budget, almost a billion dollars, and 10 million of it we're going to keep. That is something they should be able to well work into their budget. If you look at how they're hiring people, who they're hiring, and the type of raises they're giving. If you look at the financials, and I'm willing to stay after and talk to anybody about it. But just to give the ease is, we're not going to be reducing school funding, as Dan wants you to believe, in the future. That's not happening. What's happening is, we're not going to... We're taking a larger chunk of the money we would have given them by those FLOs. So, they'll be well able to budget it. You look at their financials. I'm willing to discuss it and show you. I have them here tonight. We can talk about it. But the schools are in great shape. The schools are going to do fine.
Quick question.
Thank you, Councilor McGee. Councilor Tripp?
So, this year, FLO dollars coming in, we get 31%. Next year, what's the number going to be?
So, next year, all these FLOs that they already get will continue...
No, no, I'm talking about us. Under your proposal, your ordinance...
It's not my ordinance, okay? I'll be clear on that. I haven't... And another point has not been circulated, so don't mislead the public. There's not a secret circular going around that no one else knows about. It hasn't even come out of the lawyers yet, so that's a misnomer.
Well, circulated between the administrator and the attorneys. I'm assuming you're part of that conversation.
No, no. Your assumption's wrong, sir, and I don't appreciate you doing that.
Okay, let's just...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Let me go ahead and correct the record, Mr. Chairman.
You're defaming my character.
The conversation about this has only been internal. I haven't even been...
I haven't even seen anything.
So, this is...
You're making accusations against my character.
The question is, if we take 31% this year of FLO revenues, and next year, we take 32%, we are giving cities and school districts a haircut.
Of future FLOs that have not come into existence yet.
We're taking more than we are now. That's money that would go to those budgets otherwise.
But you're insinuating that we're taking more money from them next year. We're not taking money from them. We're giving them less. There's a difference.
This budget is smoke and mirrors. This budget is smoke and mirrors, and that is exhibit number A.
Absolutely not. And I don't appreciate your comments, sir.
Anybody else like to speak?
Call the question on the amendment.
All right.
The schools have $73 million excess revenue.
I've called the question.
Councilor Shaw, did you have...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Can you restate the question we're calling right now?
Yes. What we are currently... The motion that was made was to vote on the amendment to the budget. And then we'll vote on the amendment.
Passed in committee of the whole.
The one with all the numbers that took us an hour to talk through.
Correct, yes. Thank you. I know that... I just lost track of what we were proposing. Thank you.
All right. So, all in favor of the motion to amend? Please say aye.
Roll call.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, of the council members attending, you have seven in favor, three opposed, and Mr. Collins is indicating a positive vote.
Okay.
So, that will be eight to three.
All right. And just to be clear, on amendments, we needed eight, is that correct? And we have eight?
Seven.
Just seven? Okay. Excellent. All right. Thank you. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move for approval as the budget is amended.
Thank you. Any question on the motion?
No.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Seaman.
Before we vote, I'd like to add another amendment that we make... Allow for amendments at third reading.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Agreed amendment.
Comment is, yes, I'm voting to move this along, but with the anticipation that we are going to have a thorough workshop or two, and that we will be able to make and vote on amendments at third reading.
Everybody understand the motion?
For third.
For moving for amendments at third. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I would like to move to approve the budget as amended.
Roll call.
Mr. Chairman, of the council members present, you have seven voting in favor, three opposed.
Thank you. So, the budget passes at second reading. And we will definitely have that workshop, Dr. Shaw, and we'll be prepared for amendments at third. Moving on to the next agenda item, we have committee reports, committee of the whole. And I would just say that the reconsideration was denied. Next on the agenda, we have public comments. And I'll call Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, we have eight speakers. The first is Frank Tamborello. His topic is cellphone towers.
Good evening. My intention tonight is to inspire you to upgrade your process of approving new cellphone tower installations throughout Greenville County. I am Frank Tamborello, a board member of the Saddle Creek Homeowners Association. We're a subdivision located in Greer, South Carolina. We're a small, family-oriented community of about 40 home sites. Historically, and through the early part of this year, things were pretty harmonious. Every now and then, a home would go up for sale and typically be under contract literally within a few days. Happy times. Things changed this April when Tony Langford surprised us with a 199-foot cell tower literally in our backyard, 50 feet away from our development. Without any notification, no comments, no discussions. So far, we've discussed this problem with Kelly Long, our county council representative, Tom Corbin, our state senator, Alan Morgan, our state house representative, various members of their staffs. We've collected documents from Greenville County and conducted a good deal of research on the subject. So, for the present time, we are burdened with a cellphone tower that presents us with a few problems. First, it diminishes our property values. As I mentioned before, on occasion, a home would go up for sale and literally be under contract within days. Today, there are three homes up for sale, now several weeks old, without any action. One of these homes quickly went under contingency contract with qualified buyers. But when the new cellphone tower appeared, those buyers ran. Second, we're condemned to live directly under 5G microwave radiation. While the scientific community continues to study the long-term effects of this prolonged exposure we have to endure. Lastly, this thing is just plain ugly. It towers well above our established tree line and violates our neighborhood aesthetics. There is one other consideration, and that's the rather lucrative lease agreement bestowed upon Mr. Langford under his Able Holdings Shell Company. Now, as we continue to work with legal counsel to pursue options, I respectfully petition you to help us to prevent this kind of disruption from repeating elsewhere. Technically, we understand, since the subject property is unzoned, this was done within the law. But while this new cell tower may be legal, I ask you to consider, is it fair and is it right? Perhaps the telecommunications overlay on existing zoning could spell out requirements for all proposed cell tower constellations, and all vetting would always include notifications, public hearings, and consideration of consequences. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's Ruby Bonner. Her topic is affordable housing.
Good evening. Good afternoon, everybody. Chairman, ladies chairman, vice chairman, and the complete board. Once again, I'm back here again, crying the same old thing for the same people. Housing court protection for tenants. I don't know who created the planning of the budget here, but in some of the neighborhoods around Greenville, South Carolina, I just feel that landlords are giving too much weight and protections by judges. Whether they do things according to the South Carolina law now, the judges are granting them favoritism to inconvenient people that does not deserve it. We're supposed to have laws in the state of South Carolina to protect everybody. It doesn't matter what creed, color, race that you are. And people are supposed to be treated pretty fairly. Pretty fairly.
All right.
And they're not. And I'm trying to figure out... It really has kept me awake, trying to understand how we got this far and why wasn't a certain class of people included in the planning, in the building of the houses? And how did we get here? I just need to ask a direct question. Are you members not aware that landlords are just giving the right to put people on the street? It's impossible to believe that you all are not aware of the court system here that are doing this. And they're doing it even if it's incorrect. The judges are protecting them and allowing this to happen. I am in tears today simply because I've seen so many young women with children throwing their furniture out on the street once again, and they're running. And then we sit here and we uphold this and pretend... I just think there's something being hidden here. How can you not know the effect of these communities? How can the building and planner of Greenville, South Carolina not say how they was going to build? The cost and effect of building houses without including people with certain budgets? If you're not over $80,000. I look at West Greenville. They got houses over there for $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, $700,000. Was this intentionally to deplace and injure other people and their children? Once again, I'm here at the mercy of you all, chairman and the board, to set up the housing court system to help prevent these things that's going to continue to go on and on and on till it's going to catch on fire. And I keep saying Greenville is going to soon or late to catch on fire. Behind these very issues, can you please include this? This should be something that should be here by now.
Thank you very much.
No protection.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're out of time. We have to move on, but I appreciate your comments.
I understand, chairman, but are we going... Can you guys look at this?
We will look at it, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
The next speaker is Joshua Good. His topic is affordable housing.
Welcome, Mr. Good.
Thank you. My name is Joshua Good. My address is 1615A Wade Hampton Boulevard, Greenville. Good evening, council. Thank you for your time tonight. I work in the affordable housing space at Greenville Housing Fund. And I want to start by acknowledging and appreciating the county's commitment to affordable housing. That said, I must express deep concern over the proposed reduction from $3 million to $1 million annually. This presents a 66% cut at a time when we are facing projected deficit of 20,000... Sorry, 20,000 affordable housing units in Greenville County by the end of this decade. We cannot afford to scale back our efforts now. While the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority does receive federal entitlement funds, these funds are increasingly uncertain. The current administration has made clear its intent to significantly reduce and even eliminate many of these federal funding sources in fiscal 2026, which begins October 1 of this year. And it's important to remember that the Community Development Block grant funding received by the county isn't dedicated solely to housing and also supports other critical social services and infrastructure projects. For affordable housing developments to be viable and to deliver safe, stable homes at prices working families can afford, projects typically face a funding gap of 20%, 30% total cost. That's if they can get funded at all. I've seen more projects fail to achieve funding within their stack in one way or another than projects succeed recently. Public investment is essential to bridging that gap. If we could rely on one or two funding sources, we would. But the reality is that we must layer resources from local, state, and federal sources. Even when substantial state-level funding is available, restrictions often limit what can flow into Greenville County. Many state programs also require a local match that may only fund one project at a time. That's why local general funding dollars is so important. They're flexible, responsive, and can be deployed where other funding sources fall short. These dollars give the county the ability to act quickly and strategically to meet urging housing needs. Housing is designated public purchase purpose. Like roads, emergency services, and public safety is foundational to a thriving community. You cannot recruit or retain teachers, which my sister is, nurses, or first responders you cannot afford to live in our community that they serve. Without stable, affordable housing, our workforce and our economy suffers. Cutting the county investment in affordable housing by 66% will cost the community more in the long run as housing costs continue to rise and displacement accelerates. Reducing the county's source of flexible, unrestricted, affordable housing funding sends the wrong message. It is alarming to see unprecedented cuts proposed at both federal and local levels simultaneously. This only compounds the housing crisis and severely limits our ability to respond. I respect the urge, county council, to reinstate the full $3 million for affordable housing in the county budget. I've worked within affordable housing and real estate generally for quite a long time. This is my first time addressing council. I wish... I want to wish you guys a good night, but I do want to say this is a very serious issue.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Joseph Cass. His topic is affordable housing.
Welcome, Mr. Cass.
Thank you, council, for this opportunity. My name is Joseph Cass. I live at 227 Asbury Avenue, Greenville, longtime Greenville County resident. We've heard a lot tonight, people talk about, you know, the need for affordable housing, how housing's becoming more expensive in Greenville. That's all very true. I'm sure you've heard a lot of those statistics. We do a lot of good work in this county, and some of you have done a lot of great work recruiting, you know, economic activity here, job growth. Obviously, those businesses need workforce housing. I want to talk a little bit tonight about just kind of the math. As the previous speaker talked about, the general funds are so important for matching federal and state resources. The dollars that Greenville County makes available, they're often a small percentage of the overall development budget, but they're a critical component and decisive factor. They're often the tipping point factor from a development, you know, whether it's a single-family, homes for rent, or apartments... Excuse me, single-family homes for purchase or apartments for rent. You know, that development tipping from financial feasibility or even the funding from the state and federal dollars, you know, to get those dollars here, they often require local matching to activate those dollars. So, you know, we might see a list of sources that are available from the federal government or state government. But if we want those dollars here, if we want to like use it or lose it, as a lot of those dollars, they come in that flavor. And we'd lose them if we... And we'd lose them if we don't have those general funds here to activate them, the matching dollars. So it's very important to have them. And a lot of those state and federal sources, they are, to put it mildly, they're complicated, they have a lot of restrictions, they're competitive, sometimes you apply for them, you don't get them. And so it is important for Greenville County to do what it can do to try to leverage those dollars, to get them here, to have funds that are available that can be deployed, as the previous speaker said, quickly and effectively to maximize the dollars that we can get here in Greenville County from the state and federal resources. The other point I want to make with the remainder of my time is, I just want to make sure we conceptualize that the dollars that Greenville County makes available, they don't have to be grant funds that are spent and gone and they never come back. What we see in our industry a lot are repayable loans. Those are loans with interest to make great use of the taxpayer dollars. And those loans often are those difference makers where we can match them with federal and state funds to unlock those funds. So it is important to have them. Those funds can be, often we see them in the form of interest-only loans. They can be low-cost interest loans with 2%, 4% interest, which is a lot better than the 7% you get out of bank these days. And a lot of times when the bank is doing the underwriting, that 2% or 4% loan from Greenville County is that difference maker for the feasibility. So I appreciate your time, and please consider those points.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Diane Vreeland. Her topic is Lawrence Electric.
Welcome back, Ms. Vreeland.
Hello again. This time, not on behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, it's on behalf of myself as a homeowner at 413 Heather Falls Lane in Simpsonville. I want to talk about Lawrence Electric tree topping for wires to clear the tree limbs away from the wires, which I know is the necessary thing to be done, but Lawrence Electric hires a subcontractor for tree service by the name of Asplund. They're supposed to free the wires from the trees by topping the tree limbs that are in the way. What was interesting is that they placed a flag on my property that said "drop zone." And what they did is, when they cut, they threw everything onto my property. I will say they did clear it away and take it into their trucks or wherever they put it. Many of my trees died the last time they cut them. I walked up to the supervisor's truck to speak with him because I wanted to address that, only discovered that he was fully reclined in his seat, and he was not happy with me. Lord only knows what I interrupted. In reality, the electric wires may be free, but due to the butchering practices of this company, they're killing trees all over town. You just have to take a drive and you can tell exactly where they were. We called and complained to Lawrence Electric supervisor, Jason, who oversees the trimming. He was responsive, and I have to say, he came out that day, and he said that it was ugly, but they couldn't afford to trim trees as they would have to come out too often and it costs too much money. Coincidentally, after the supervisor's visit, the remaining butchered tree limbs were left laying on top of my smaller trees rather than being removed. All of a sudden, now they stopped removing them. We had to hire somebody to climb a ladder and pull them off and discard them. Not only were our trees killed, tree limbs and debris were left to rot on the ground and on top of other trees. This is a fire hazard, endangering our neighborhoods as well as other neighborhoods. When driving around, you can readily see they are destroying trees all over town. Something needs to be done. I don't know what you can do, but there's gotta be a solution to this. It's an abomination. Go down McKinney Road and take a look. It's horrible what they're doing. There's all dead trees lining the roadways. It's not good. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Vreeland.
The next speaker is Jerry Wilson. His topic is District 25, Safety Issues and Beautification.
Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
First of all, my name is Jerry Wilson. I'm a pastor, and I am a business owner in the District 25. I've had several occasions where I've seen pedestrians hit by vehicles, and I can recall 10 years ago, me being before the council and expressing this, and we still have the same scenario. I pastor a church on Old Grove Road that's in the Gant Community, and Augusta Grove is down the street from the church. And we have semis that are constantly using that passageway to get to Augusta Grove. We don't have any sidewalks, we don't have, you know, the beautification of it, the grass is up, so therefore, the pedestrians are actually having to get into the ditch or whatever to stay out of harm's way. Something really needs to be done. I called Councilman Fant on Wednesday of last week on Augusta and White Horse, where my business resides, and there was an individual that was struck by a vehicle, and he was just trying to cross the street. And it's getting worse. And that's why I'm here today, to try to express that, to get some kind of assistance. When we've had community meetings, we've actually got the state in because they are state roads, and they tell us that they don't have funds. So our hands are tied, and someone is gonna get hurt or even get killed because the negligence, the negligence that is taking place. We need help in District 25. As far as the beautification is concerned, I pay a hospitality tax, which I understand that's for tourism, and I don't see anything changing in District 25 that would attract business to my establishment. But yet, I'm continually paying hospitality tax, and we really need to revisit that because most of the tourism is downtown Greenville. It's not actually out into the district, out into the county areas. I even need help with that. I don't have a problem paying tax, the hospitality tax, if I am able to gain something from it, but we're not getting anything from it. We don't get the tourists. Our business stays the same year round. So I'm soliciting your help as a pastor, as well as a businessman in District 25, to help us to resolve some of the safety concerns that we have. There's been many people on White Horse Road that have been hit by cars. So I thank you for your help with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Latonya Phillips. Her topic is Habitat for Humanity.
Welcome, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you all, and good evening. My name is Latonya Phillips, and I serve as president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity. And I'm here to advocate for 3 million or more in the housing budget. I'd like to start off by engaging our audience, though. So, audience, if there is anyone here tonight that has struggled finding affordable housing or has an immediate family member that has that problem, please stand. If there is a teacher that has been in the industry for five years or less, would you please stand? Or you have a family member that is a teacher in that industry. Are there any first responders or your immediate family members that have been in the industry for less than five years? Would you please stand? Are there any nonprofit employees here? Would you please stand? Are there any healthcare workers or hospitality workers? Are there any new graduates that are making less than $75,000? Or you have someone in your immediate family? Would you please stand? So, council, all of these people behind me, myself, and all of you, we are what makes Greenville Greenville. If the people behind me, because of their chosen careers, can't find affordable housing, they'll begin to wander away. They'll move to other communities. And then sadly, Greenville is no longer Greenville. The area median income, as you all know, just went up to $97,300, which means that in most cases, $75,000 or below puts you in that space of affordable housing, depending on your family dynamics. My biggest message to you tonight is that you please consider the people that this affects. Please stand up again. Very diverse. This is our community. This is who Greenville is. Please, please, consider the funding that you're pulling away, how it affects the people that are sitting here tonight. I urge you to revisit the housing allocation and replace the 2 million or more back into the housing budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the last speaker is Sheila Dogen. Her topic is affordable housing.
Welcome, Ms. Dogen.
Good evening, council, and thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight, or address you tonight. As you've just heard, my name is Sheila Dogen. I am currently the executive director for Beyond Housing SC. Beyond Housing is one of the oldest affordable housing organizations here in Greenville. In fact, we were birthed from GCRA. We currently have property in Bruton Town, Nickel Town. My last three homes we were able to build and sell was in District 25. But I'm standing here tonight as a representative, as well as a person who has experienced living and raising in poverty, and it's really ironic that I ended up in the affordable housing industry or with an organization because I experienced that. So I didn't bring any notes with me. I'm passionate about this. I live this. I currently have a senior complex, and I know for a fact that, and all of our rental property, we will not go any higher than 30%. And still, there are difficulties there to pay their rent. And I hate to name some of the things that they're doing to supplement their income. I don't have to, nor should I, state what has already been stated by others. You know the numbers. You are city county council. You hear it all the time. But I'm gonna sum it up for you in four words, how important, the reason why this money is so important. Minimum wage is still 725. And what is the county gonna do with a million dollars? What, they're gonna build, what, two houses? Cost of cost to build, to build a three-bedroom, 1,300-square-foot home, which some of you may even live larger, is over $220,000. If you know someone that can build one less, y'all please let me know. Because I have property currently here in the county, and I'm begging for money to build rental units, senior units. So I ask you, will you please reconsider and give this money back? Because your house, your home, is the basic necessity. Let, give it back, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have the administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, the only thing I have this evening is to remind you, the Citizens Academy will be a week from today. That session will include the visit to the VSC, which is Vehicle Service Center, and then proceed out to Twin Chimneys for lunch. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is requesting motions by council members. Does anybody have anything tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Fant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As all of you know, adequate funding for workforce housing is still missing from next year's budget. I continue to be distressed that this council continues to hijack and promote a false narrative of what workforce housing really is and do nothing to correct the narrative with your constituents. It should not be lost on anyone, that for the first time in nine years, this council does not even have a workforce housing ad hoc committee to address issues and make recommendations as the need arises. When we continue to spew utter disdain and vitriolic hate for a commitment to workforce housing, like calling it a scam, we're turning our backs on our local law enforcement officers, our firefighters, our EMTs, our schoolteachers, and our nurses, people who are a valuable asset to our community. I have requested our staff to scour every pot of funding and find a way to put the 2 million dollars back that was initially removed from the budget to start with, and to leave my colleagues' desire to give that 1.5 mil tax reduction, which is $6 for every $100,000 house you own, still, give it back to the taxpayers so they can say, "We reduced taxes," even if it's only $6. In closing, what happened? What really happened to our commitment to follow the words of scripture in Matthew 25 and 40 that says, "Inasmuch as ye do it unto the least of these, my brethren, ye do it unto me." With that said, I find it unconscionable and that we are operating with an inoperable spiritual gyroscope, that we would refuse to provide funding that would assist our seniors that are on fixed income make needed safety repairs to their homes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Fant. Anybody else?
Make a move that we adjourn.
All right. All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.